Good evening. Let me go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Rural County City Gruya Independent School District to order. It is Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. It is now 6:31 PM, and we are at the Ringo Elementary Cafeteria at Fort Ringold. For purposes of determining quorum, let me go ahead and take roll call. Mr. Doctor, Ms. Doctor Veronica Barrera?
Present.
Mr. Elizado Velazquez Jr.
Present.
Mr. Johnny Pope IV.
Present.
Mr. Noi Castillo.
Present.
Mr. Basilio D. Vareal Jr.
Present.
Mr. Jay Peña.
Present.
And myself, Eric Ramirez, present. Let the minutes reflect that there is a quorum to proceed. Section two, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Pope, we hope with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed with any official school business, it's become a tradition for moments of silence when we lose our brother or sister. I've been informed that a Mr. Usvaldo Guzmán, who's worked at the Transportation Department for 13 years, having the essential job of driving our kids to and from school, he passed away, so we lost him. And in his honor, like we do all our brothers and sisters, please join me in a moment of Thank you so much. Section three, conduct election of Board of Education Officers to have a motion or any discussion on section three.
Mr. President, I move that we put Eric Ramirez president, Jay Peña Vice President, Basilio Vareal Secretary.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Is there any discussion required? There being none, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section four, approval of minutes, which is the public hearing on March 8th, 2023, and the regular board meeting of March 8th, 2023.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the public hearing on March the 8th of 2023 and the regular board meeting on March the 8th of 2023.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section five, public forum. Do I have anything? Thank you. Section six, recognitions. The first one listed is spelling bee recognition. I have Mrs. Olivares presenting.
Good evening, Mr. President, School Board members, Mr. Peña. I'm super excited to be here with you this morning or this afternoon to recognize our spelling bee students. We had a regional competition in March on the 4th, and we had three students representing our district there. They did extremely well. I'm very, very proud of them, and I wanted to recognize them alongside you all tonight. So if you all will come up, and we have some certificates for them, and we have some little gifts for them.
You're all great.
Our students, they're elementary students. We have a middle school student that also competed. Very, very proud. We're the only district in our county that competed at the regional spelling bee, and our students competed against older kids, so I'm very proud of them. They held their own. Their words were very difficult. They had to know pronunciations. They had to know the background of words, definitions. I mean, it was very exciting to see. So I'm very, very proud of them, especially since they're very young. We have fifth and sixth graders, so I'm very excited to see what they're going to do for our district.
Awesome.
So Ms. Morris is going to help us present certificates, Mr. Peña. So our three students, we have Eloy Garza. He's a fifth grader from General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary. And Eloy was our district champion from our district. And his coach was Ms. Gia Olivares. Then we had Rebecca Ramirez. She's a sixth grader at Ringo Middle School. And her coach is Ms. Dulce Cantú. And then we had Ms. Moncerrat Hernández. She's a fifth grader at Ringo Elementary. And her coach is Ms. Rachel Cortez. We had two fifth graders in this round of champions, so I'm very, very proud of them and their coaches. They had to learn over 400 words plus additional words from the dictionary that they would be tested on in case the rounds used up all the words. So they prepared very hard for this competition. I'm very, very proud of them. Congratulations, guys. I'm sorry, it's Rebecca Martinez.
Second recognition is for National Library Week celebrations. I have Nidia Benitez presenting.
Good evening, President of the Board, Board members, Mr. Peña, public. I am very honored to be here tonight to recognize our librarians and our upcoming events for National Library Week. So I will be calling them. And Mr. Peña, can you help us? Mrs. Morris, can you help? We have a certificate for our librarians, and I will be calling the ones that are present. Marbelia Barrera from Rio Grande City High School. Nancy Garcia from Veterans Middle School. Rosario Osuna from Gruya Middle School. Ambarina Pérez from John and Olive Inojosa Elementary. Erica Salinas from AC2E Elementary. Jeanette Solis from Ringo Elementary. Armandina Villarreal from Gruya High School. And Belinda Núñez Peña from Roque Guerra Junior Elementary. And the librarians, I want to thank these ladies for a great job, for their dedication to what they do, and we put together a small presentation that we want to share with you. We are celebrating National Library Week. This is only the beginning. It is actually, we start with a Library Day on April the 4th, then we follow with Library Week and Library Month. So there are celebrations at our libraries a month, so you're going to see that we continue to do those celebrations. So we started with National Library Day, Librarians' Day, and we treated our librarians to a session with the art teachers, Ms. Elinda Martínez and Ms. Alvarado from Rio Grande City High School. They gave us a lesson on painting. So that was the beginning. There you go. I do want to highlight some of the accomplishments that we have in our department through the Battle of the Books. We have a competition at the regional level, and for the Battle of the Books, our middle school team received third place, which was composed by students from AC2E Middle School and Gruya Middle School. Our high school team received fourth place. This was composed by students from Rio Grande City High School and Gruya High School. We also celebrated poetry through two poetry nights in our community, one at the Tijerina Courtyard, Lopez Tijerina Courtyard, and the other one at Gruya Elementary. Both events were very successful among our community. This was an event that was performed in collaboration with our public library, as well as other librarians helped with that. The theme for this year's National Library Week is there's more to the story. There's always more to the story, and that's what I want to share with you tonight, that it's a little bit difficult with the clicker. Our schools are doing events, different kinds of events. We have, for example, at Gruya Middle School, we have national robotics. They have competitions going on. The students dress up in different themes. It's just taking, it's a little bit difficult with the clicker, I'm sorry. At Ringo Elementary, I hope I didn't skip anyone. At Ringo Elementary, we had events such as also dress up. They have different designations for every day. They go with themes that the students participate in. At Ramirez Elementary, they had a literacy parade. The students made their costumes together with their teachers. At La Unión Elementary, again, dress up day, they had a bookmark contest. Okay, I'm not pressing it. At Ricardo Sanchez Elementary, they had, again, different activities throughout the week of April the 4th through the 8th. At Rio Grande City High School, I am very proud to say that our librarian is promoting the SINC audiobooks, which is a program in which free audiobooks are given to the public, to the students, and those are, anybody can download them. If you want more information on that, please contact or check her website. She has more information on that. She also co-sponsors with Brittany Ramirez the esports in which our students are competing, and they made it to the second level of the playoffs, which is called the Super Smash Brothers Ultimate Competition, and that's, that's very good. They, they went several levels before they were eliminated. So our students are doing very good with the, with the esports through our library. At Ace Elementary, we had events such as dress up and contests. Our students were recognized by going to the Hype. This is for the AR trip. This already happened. At Alto Bonito, once again, the students dressed up with different topics. And at Alberto Encelada Barrera, we had, they had a bookmark competition as well as the dress up. At John and Olive Inojosa, they celebrated the Sensational Millionaire Reader. They have a student, they had a reading contest in which the students won prizes. So as you can see, a lot of things are happening at our libraries, but one that I am particularly very proud of is the Sensational Reading Challenge. And I had a slide, but I can't find it. But it's okay. In which I want to recognize our students who are millionaires. We have quite a bit, but I want, I do want to mention their names. It won't take me long. We have from Ringo Elementary, Moncerrat Hernández, José Peña, and Joselyn Peña from AC2E Elementary, Adrián Villalobos, Victor González, Jesús García, Tatiana Hernández, Eloy Garza, Yesé, Yesella García, Eliel Orta from Roque Guerra Junior Elementary, Junali García from Ace Middle School, Gina Cabello, Ariana Cantú, Emily García, Rebecca Martinez from Gruya Middle School, Karina Martínez, Filiberto Martínez from JNO Inojosa Elementary, Gerardo Villarreal from La Unión Elementary, Daritza Cantú, Yaneo Correa, Roel Gasca from, once again, from Ace Elementary, another group, Adrian Aguirre, Eric García, Gerardo Vázquez, Eduardo Vázquez, Víctor Rui Ríos, Ariana Garza, Emmanuel Orta, Gerardo Barrera, Jesús Barrera from General Ricardo Sanchez, Athena Terán, Isabella Carmona, Kendra Gómez, Giovanni Rangel, Yaila Pérez, Carly Solis, Sophia García, Mariah García, Maricela García, Allison Fleming, John Fleming, Andrew Hernández, Joyce Sanchez, Camila Solis, Devin Laurel, and Eric López. These students made it to the, they made, they read a million words throughout this school year. And we also have more recognitions, but I'm going to stop right there. So thank you very much.
I hope you all enjoyed the week. Seriously, I think librarian is, to me, is one of those evolving roles and functions that changes quite a bit. It's not just taking care of the library, you know? You're involved in so many different programs and so many, especially at the younger level, and y'all just don't get the recognition you deserve so much. So I'm glad you came. I know not everybody's here. There's also librarian aides and other individuals who deserve a lot of the accolades and credit along with you. But I know I speak on behalf of the board when I say we appreciate everything you do. Thank you for the passion you show in doing it. I don't, maybe it's not recognized as much, or it's not out there as much, but don't think it doesn't go unnoticed, or it is noticed, let's put it that way. So thank you all from, at least from the bottom of our hearts. Appreciate it. I don't know if anybody else. Anybody else want to add to that or say anything?
Well, I, I just want to say thank you, and also because of the librarians, when I was in school, I was actually fifth grade, yes, if we're, but the fifth grade spelling champion. I beat all the first graders. So, but thank you all again. Appreciate you all very much.
Well, I guess. Mr. Vareal, anything?
No, just, what can I say? I always say that that facility is the book of knowledge. You can visit the whole world going to that facility. So on behalf of, I think, the entire board, they said, to all the people who work in those particular facilities, thank you because you opened up the world to all the children. Thank you.
Mr. Castillo.
Thank you all very much. I don't know if it's working, but thank you all very much for what you do. You know, all those students go through all you guys, sometimes, you know, not like some of the teachers, they don't catch all of you all do, and you know, you have a special place in all of our hearts. Thank you all for what you do, and I think everybody already said a lot, so I really appreciate it, and you're doing God's work again. Thanks.
Mr. Pope.
I guess I would like to go off of what Vareal, Basilio Vareal says, that, you know, it reminds me of the story that I read where the creator of Game of Thrones, he couldn't afford to go on vacations, so he would go to the library and read books, and that was his vacation, and then look what he became. So, I mean, this is just opening up a new world to the students that spend their time in the libraries. So thank you for everything that you all do.
Mr. Velazquez.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you so much. And Mr. Peña made a comment when I was shaking your hand congratulating you. Hey, come on, you didn't even, you didn't even go to the library.
I never saw you in the library. That's what I said.
He said, he said, you didn't even go here. You don't have a library card.
Hey, and actually, I did. I read all the baseball books in the library. No, but thank you, thank you, ladies. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Barrera.
Happy Libraries Week for everybody. Thank you for making it fun for our kids with all these activities. Keep making books and libraries fun for the kids. Thank you.
All right. Section seven, reports and information under I Don't Want, it's update on students, staff highlights. I have Mr. Osuna presenting.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, our distinguished board members and everybody here today. As is customary, we do show highlights for the previous month of all the wonderful things that are going on in our district. We just saw a wonderful presentation by our librarians, all the wonderful things that they do. So here is our month of March highlights.
Inojosa Elementary was recognized as a Purple Star campus for the 2022-2024 school years. We would like to thank everyone who participated in this special event. We would like to congratulate the Rio Grande City High School Win Act Play Team as they traveled to Laredo and brought back five individual awards. Congratulations to early college high school teacher Elisa Delgado for being surprised by HEV as being one of the five finalists in the state of Texas in the HEV Finalist Excellence in Education Award. RGCG ISD along with the Rio Grande City Public Library hosted the Ultimate Poetry Slam and Art Walk. We would like to thank our students, staff, and community for attending this event. RGCG ISD had the honor of hosting David Bled throughout our middle schools and high schools. David is a motivational speaker who urged students to make good choices and to show respect for all. The RGCG ISD Special Services Department held the annual Special Olympics competition. We would like to thank all of our students and staff who participated and made this event possible and a success. The Achieving Inspirational Mary Banquet was hosted by the GFCW Florence J. Scott Women's Club Federation Day. Former RGCG ISD graduates shared inspiring messages to our honoring seniors and expressed the importance of continuing their journey to success. RGCG ISD hosted the Superintendent's Track Meet at Joe R. Sanchez Stadium. We are so proud of our students. Thank you to everyone who made this event possible. RGCG ISD hosted the 17th Annual Superintendent's Golf Tournament in an effort to raise funds for our graduating seniors. The annual AP Banquet was hosted by RGCG ISD to honor our wonderful students who have earned prestigious titles. Congratulations to each and every one of our students. March was a sensational.
Obviously, there are so many different events that happen throughout the month that, you know, obviously, every single day, our campus is doing a wonderful job also of posting all the events that are going on. So the video would be very, very lengthy, so it is a tedious process to choose, you know, some of these things, but as you saw, wonderful things, sensational things are happening in our district.
All right, let's, okay, we go to item number two. Mr. Osuna presenting two. That's a report on construction projects.
Once again, this next video is about some of the projects that we have going on at our district.
The upcoming RGCG ISD projects for March are progressing very well. The Ringo Middle School track field is getting so much needed attention. This is the first step of the renovation project, which aims to improve the look of the field and increase the comfort and satisfaction of our students and athletes. The Veterans Middle School track field is the first track in history for the campus and will be used for all physical education and athletic activities. It will feature an all-weather track and consist of six lanes. The multi-purpose faculty and student testing center will house the main networking station which goes out to all campuses. It will also house meeting rooms for staff's recommendations. By keeping up its building, it will support its office and the. This has been Tatiana Hernández from AC2E Elementary.
We apologize for the technical difficulties with the audio, and I just have to commend this is our librarian who always cooperates with Tatiana. She is our talented voice actress right there. So thank you, and that, well, those were our presentations for our projects and our highlights. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, which is the district audit report, will be discussed in executive session as that deals with safety issues. So that'll be discussed in executive session. Section eight, recommending approving the consent agenda. The board has agreed to discuss the following items. All the items below, they're not called out, will be approved by consent. Consent agenda, item number one, consider and take possible action on donations to Rural County City Gruya ISD.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item one. Consent agenda is presented, and if you could just call out the names so people can appreciate the people that donated.
Yes, very well. There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Castillo. Let me go ahead and have Mrs. Robles read the names, and then we'll take the vote.
Good evening. The donations for the month of March were Inventory Trading Company, Revive Fort Ringold, Fidencia Salinas Jr., Charities, Aid Foundation of America, Guerra Family Dentistry, Encarnación Science III, Adolfo Peña Jr., Lone Star National Bank, Comet Cleaners, Starr County for Feature Account, Melissa Gonzalez, Maximo Pérez, San Juanita Reyes, RV Income Tax Services, Terza USA, JR's Tires and Services, and Lori Peterson Pérez. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Vareal, and a second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Action item number two, consider and take possible action on travel requests. There are three different ones from General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary, Rio High School, Maria Chica Cascavel, and Child Nutrition Program Department. Is there any discussion or motion on item two?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item two, three, four, and five as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal to approve items two, three, and four?
Three, two, three, four, and five.
Five. Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required? I know there was.
I think, just real quickly, it's a lot of, it's, and it's also, you know, sending some of our people out to different functions.
Yes.
But it's also, you know, allowing, empowering the facility so kids can have things to do in the summer. So I think it's real important.
That is correct. And with regards to, I know there were some issue in the Cascavel, I know that was permission for them to travel out of state. That's correct, Mr. Peña?
Yes, that is correct, sir.
And I noticed on the decision form, it says transmittal account. That's because the vast majority of the money raised for that trip was fundraised?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. All right, is there any other questions or discussions, concerns on items two through five? I also noticed that they're spending some proof of insurance on, I think it was item four and five. Can we just make sure that they follow up with the proof of insurance on those? Other than that, any further discussion, questions? No? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item number six, consider and take possible action on pay request invoice. Number one, for civil engineering services for Rural County City High School Cosmetology and Barber, addition payable to CHLH Engineering LLC. Have a motion and discussion on item six.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item six, seven, eight, and nine as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal to approve items six through nine. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velazquez. Is there any discussion required on any of the particular items? All right, there being none, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand.
After all, except abstaining on number seven.
Okay, there's the same sign as far as item six, eight, and nine, and on item seven, Mr. Castillo is abstaining, so that motion passes with a vote of six to zero. Item number 10, consider and take possible action on proposed proposal for construction materials testing services for New Gruda Middle School. Have a motion and discussion on item 10.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 10 as presented in our board packet.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velazquez. Is there any discussion required?
Which one was that?
Number ten, that's on the Gruia Middle. Any discussion, questions, concerns? Right, there being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion passes. Item eleven, consider and take possible action on agreement with Gerlock Builders LLC, DBA Wilcon for the construction of the New Gruia Middle School. Is there a motion or any discussion on item eleven?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item eleven, the construction of the new Gruia Middle School. It's about time.
Awesome. There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal on item eleven. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velazquez. Any additional discussion? After that ruckus announcement? No? Alright, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Alright, so no, Mr. Castillo is abstaining on item eleven. Motion passes with a vote of six to zero. Item number twelve, consider and take possible action on budget amendment number 2023-6. Do you have any, a motion or any discussion on item twelve?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item twelve and thirteen as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve items twelve and thirteen. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a question on the twelve.
Okay, there's a motion, second by Mr. Peña, I'm sorry. Dr. Barrera, go ahead and proceed with discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted an, like, oh, wait, let me see, is it explanation here on 164?
I know they handed an addendum, I believe. There's an additional form-
That's for number fourteen.
Okay, sorry. That's item, uh- Fourteen, fourteen, I apologize.
Yeah, like, what is, what is it that they're doing?
On the budget amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, number twelve, Mrs. Robles.
The first item, uh, it was a request from the Child Nutrition Program to increase their budget by $600,000, and this is to process food purchase orders. The second one is $30,000 going to the Fine Arts Department for the marching band shows for next year. The bilingual department moving monies around to purchase, uh, the assessments. The GT program moving monies, uh, also to purchase testing materials. And then we have Gruia High School moving monies, uh, to fund travel expenses for the upcoming UIL meets.
Any further discussion required on either item? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item fourteen, consider and take possible action on requisitions of $5,000 and over. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item fourteen?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item fourteen as presented in our board packet with some questions.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second before discussion?
With the addendum, sir.
Yes.
With the addendum.
Correct. One second to Mr. Peña. Second, Mr. Peña. You may proceed with discussion, Mr. Villarreal.
Yeah, let me start off. Uh, the Special Education Department is buying, uh, 224 computers within budget?
Uh, good evening. Uh, yes, sir. Um, they do have, they are putting an amendment actually through TEA for it to get approved. They do have the funding for it, so we're just pending approval.
Okay.
It's from a grant, sir?
Yeah, it, it's from a grant.
Okay, so it's a grant then?
Yes, it's all grant money.
Okay.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Let me ask another question. Um, here we go. I don't understand this one. Uh, maybe you could explain. On, on the thirty-five, thirty-three, sixteen, it says Texas Musical Festival, but then it's talk about wrapping of vehicles. How does the Texas Musical Festival talk about, and wrappings, how do they correlate?
They actually started doing projects that pertain to wrapping now. It's something that they started doing this year. So that's why we went with them. Um, I know Mr. Rodriguez requested some quotes, and it's, it's something that they do now.
So let me ask, Mr. Garcia, is he here or not? Let me ask, I know that we bought used trailers. When we're gonna wrap them, is any, any work that needs to be done to these trailers before they get wrapped, maybe a better word? Yes, thank, thank you.
Good evening. Uh, yes, Mr. Villarreal, uh, there's a lot of work that needs to be done since there's some, uh, existing, uh, lettering and, and, uh, print on the trailers, the used trailers that we purchased. They need to be removed. Um, on the bottom part, there's a lot of, uh, metal that needs to be sandblasted and painted, and then, um, of course, at the end wrapped.
So how does, the quote they gave us, does that include that or not include that?
I did not talk to that company as what I, um, got from, uh, Mr. Oscar Gonzalez is that, that they were gonna do that, that it was part of the quote. That's the information that I got.
So they're gonna do what you just talked about?
That is what Mr. Gonzalez told me, yes, sir.
Okay, can, can we make sure that before we approve, I mean, we're gonna approve it, but make sure that when we approve it, that they do, in other words, I don't wanna say, well, we only did the wrap, hey, by the way, this is broken, or this is, this needs to be sandblasted. That's not our job. I, I just wanna make sure that they're gonna do the job in its completeness.
Correct.
Can you check on that? And if not, I think you need to bring it back to the superintendent.
Okay, I sure will. Thank you, sir.
And, uh, again, another one. Is this a grant also, Mr. Peña? It says, uh, Connections Special Ed, seventy-five thousand, seven forty-eight. Is that another grant?
Yes.
Same grant?
It's actually different, but they are from Special Ed.
Okay, but it's a grant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's the only questions I have.
And without going into detail, Mr. Guerra, I know that there's some safety equipment for PD officers also included.
Yes, that is correct.
Alright, thank you. Any further questions, discussion? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following bids. We have three. We have bid number twenty-three dash twenty-five with regards to concrete, bid number twenty-three dash twenty-six with regards to janitorial supplies, and bid number twenty-three through twenty-seven with regards to construction materials. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item fifteen?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen as presented in our board packet so as long as the bids are the lowest bids.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve item fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Is there a second to that motion? Second, Mr. Castillo. Is there any discussion required?
Are they the lowest bids?
The ones that came in, and I can just go through them real quick. The one for bid twenty-three, twenty-five, the concrete, they were the only one that submitted, and of course, there are local vendors. Then we did have the other one that came in of twenty-three, twenty-six, janitorial supplies. We have more than just one that is provided on there, so of course, our departments or campuses, they reach out to these vendors and they get quotes, and of course, whoever's lower, they go with them. And in reference to twenty-three, twenty-seven, construction materials, we only had Borregas Electric submit, but that's only because we have other companies or vendors like McCoy's that are part of Byboard. So that's why they don't submit bids anymore, but since they are through Byboard, they are an approved vendor.
Mr. Guerra, real quick, uh, on the concrete and construction materials, the amounts were small, correct?
It, it just depends, they submitted on the things that, or, or what's your question?
I think there were, the amounts were a thousand eight hundred and one, and then the Lopez concrete already mixed was also a couple hundred bucks, I think.
Yeah, that's what they provide for the per cubic yard, so it's a hundred and twenty dollars.
Right. And on janitorial, we had seven bidders, and I guess depending on what you need-
Yes, depending on the supplies that they need, they reach out to them, and of course, whoever comes in with the lower price, that's who we go with.
Let me ask one last question. Uh, Chris, do we ever, like, for example, on concrete or, when one person bid, is the only bid, do we at least go check to make sure that's a good bid? In other words, if they're the only bids, do we go out there and say, just call any company in the valley, what's your bid for concrete, to make sure that, since they're the only ones, we're still getting a good bid? And I'm not, I'm referring to concrete. I'm just saying, when we get only one bid, do we go out there and check and make sure it's a good bid?
That, yeah, the, the bids are good. I, uh, you're referring to the pricing, correct?
Right, exactly.
Um, I know we do reach out depending of, of course, the amount, because if it's something minor, I mean, two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, I mean, for the most part, it is the lowest, but of course, as the prices increase for the work that needs to be done or supplies that we're trying to get, that's when we go out and get more quotes.
So a hundred twenty dollars i- is a good bid then, you think?
Based off of the prices that are out there, I would say yes, but if you want me to, I can go out and-
No, no, I, I, I trust you, sir. If you say it's a good bid, I, I just, I, the only thing, when we have one bidder, it would be nice to go check with the other companies, even though they can't bid, to make sure we're, we're getting a good bid and not saying, well, I'm the only bidder, so I wanna charge you more because I'm the only bidder.
Because, of course. Yeah, but we can, what I can do is moving forward, of course, I can do that.
But they, it seems that it's a good bid, so with that said, I move, we already have a first and a second, so.
Let me just ask, Dr. Salinas, on the summer employee working schedule, the question I get a lot is, is the one-hour wellness gonna be included? There's a lot of interest in the one-hour wellness.
As for the summer schedule, the one-hour wellness is included. Uh, like, include for the record, uh, any employees with the, any type of, um-
Fitness?
Fitness enrollment.
Yeah, fitness, uh, what is it?
Membership.
There you go. Any membership, as long as it's approved by their supervisor, that's allowed also. Thank you. You do have a schedule there that we're, we're offering for the summer.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any further discussion? Alright, there was a motion by Mr. Villarreal, a second by Mr. Castillo. All is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item eighteen, consider and take possible action on renewing District of Innovation Plan for 2023 through 2028. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item eighteen?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three as presented in our board packet.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve items eighteen through twenty-three. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required? And I'll give you some time, sir. There are a few items. Who's presenting on item twenty-three? I have Roxanne Garza presenting, but I don't-
Curious about that program.
Yeah, I am too. I have questions. Elsa, maybe? By default, always, Miss Elsa Villarreal Morris, come on up. It's the Ivy League Quest Initiative? I'll ask Peña, Mr. Peña, is the question, I think you got the same question I did.
Wait a minute, is rice on there?
No.
It's an Ivy League, right?
Yes.
Uh, basically, that trip already happened. It happened during spring break. Um, I guess we just didn't have a board meeting. What it was is, uh, through Region One, and, uh, since we're part of the GEARUP, they got a group of Region One area parents and their child to be able to attend a tour of the Midwestern colleges, and it was a bus tour. Uh, so we did have students that were able to take advantage. We didn't select them, they were chosen by Region One, but we did have some parents that, parent, it had, the parent had to go in order for the child to go. But it was, uh, a trip that was, okay, these are the students that are going, you don't have to pay anything. It was free to the parent and to the child. Uh, GEARUP through Region One paid that.
You answered my question. It was, I think it's a very nice program, and I just didn't know how they were selected, but Region One-
Region One selected. I think they were probably just equitable for every school. I think they allowed one, and then if someone didn't go and gave up that seat, then they offered it up to somebody else. But they took care of all, I think it was on the news as well.
Really?
Yes, so.
Mr. Peña, is that the same question you had, or? He wants to know if rice was included.
Yeah. Looks like a good program.
Alright, thank you. Any further discussion on any of the other items?
On item twenty-
Yes, sir.
Which, which one's the calendar?
Mr. Dr. Salinas?
I'm sorry, Mr. Velazquez, a question?
The one that, the one that was chosen, I guess.
Item twenty, yeah.
Twenty?
Which was the calendar that was chosen?
On item twenty, that's the twenty-three, twenty-four Employee Working Calendars. What that is, Mr. Velazquez, uh, board members, is the working calendars for all employees from one hundred and eighty days all the way to two hundred and twenty-six. That's, that's the Employee Working Calendars.
And that's the one that the administration is recommending?
Yes, sir, that's the one.
Did we, uh, I remember that back then, we would do a survey. Did, did we, uh, conduct a survey this, this year?
Would that be for, for item nineteen, for the instructional calendar?
Yes.
Yes. So what we have, Mr. Velazquez, we have the recommendation by administration. That's the one that we're, we're recommending. And we did have a survey, and from the data that we received back, that's, that's the recommendation we're making. Yes, sir.
Any further questions, discussion? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-four, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase lending devices from Lasso, L-A-S-O, grant. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item twenty-four?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item twenty-four and just if, uh, just, uh, if they can give us a little summary, because it talks about purchasing a lot of things.
Yes, I agree. Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Castillo. I have, I have beneath this, there is some iPads for Kinder and First Grades, and then laptops for third through fifth graders.
Correct.
Yeah.
Uh, once again, good evening. Uh, yes, so through the Lasso Grant, which is, um, it has several components. One is the lending of devices. We receive $225,000 to order. It can be iPads, laptops, the covers for the iPads, and that's what we're spending the money on. We are buying the iPads primarily for the lower grades, uh, Kinder and First, and the laptops will be distributed for the upper grades. These devices are tied to classrooms where the Amplify program is being utilized. So it's, it's tied to other grants such as the Blending Grant and the Strong Foundations Grant, and another one. Yes, that's right, the Strong Foundations Implementation Plan. So all of those grants, there are three or four, they're intertwined, and the devices are to complement those other grants.
So it's, it's the, it's complementing all the grants that we got the other day on.
He wanted us to have a work session with you all to just kind of go over what the grant stipulates and what are some of the assurances that we have to make as a district? What are some of the, I guess, opportunities will be afforded to our, to our staff and our administration? Because one of the grants does have an incentive pay, but it won't be through us, it'll be through TEA. So the one that was, I think, three point four, three point six million, that one also has monies that if teachers comply and complete certain modules, they will receive a stipend directly from the state, and that applies to administrator or central office staff. It's like very similar to the reading academy, so if they complete the modules and they're successful and they upload artifacts as stipulated in the grant, then they will be able to receive that money directly from the state to them. So, uh, that was part of the, of that big part of the-
So what was the totality of all the grants that came with all the-
Almost four million dollars.
Huh?
Almost four million dollars, or a little over four million dollars. So the devices that Ms. Beneath is talking about, that's through the lending grant. So, uh, we are pending our NOGA, we already submitted our budget, so it's just a matter of them approving our budget and if they have to make any, uh, changes. But as far as her, uh, grant, all of that money has to be utilized to buy devices, so.
And these total, I think, two hundred and two, okay. Any further discussion required on item twenty-four? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-five, consider and take possible action on 2023 through 2024 allotment and tax certification. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item twenty-five?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve items twenty-five through twenty-seven. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required on any, either item? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-eight, consider and take possible action on renewal of Level Data software for the 2023 to 2024 school year. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item twenty-eight?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three as presented in our board packet.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve items twenty-eight through twen- thirty-three?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velazquez. Any discussion required?
Uh, I just have, uh, some, like, question on thirty-one.
Alright, on thirty-one, uh, Mrs. Adelina Villarreal presenting? You may proceed with discussion, Dr. Barrera.
Uh, yeah, if she can give me a little bit of information. It says, um, possible action on contract agreement between College First and the ISD for Saturday camps. What is that? Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Okay, yes, uh, College First is a vendor that we use through Ernesto Villarreal, through the migrant program as well. And, uh, we're gonna start this Saturday, hopefully we all approve. And we're a little bit short in our attendance because of all the holidays that we've been having. Um, like, last Monday, when we don't come to school in A's, we have to make up that day. So every three hours equals one day. So Ernesto's gonna come in on Saturday to help catch up for the middle schools, which are grant schools that they're behind because of all the holidays we've had. But the computer from them doesn't understand that. So if he comes in for those, um, days, and for example, this coming weekend, it's gonna be on, um, if you, I think you have a, an attachment there. They're different themes. Uh, we have forensic science, we have space exploration. So the, the grant, um, managers of that team will select some students. It's about a hundred and one dollars per student, and it's gonna be two camps, hopefully at RMS and VMS. And then the next weekend, it's gonna be at another one. There're gonna be five, there're gonna be different themes. And, uh, it's gonna be six hours, so six hours will translate till, for two days, so we can catch up on our attendance. Due to, for example, last week on Monday, we were off because of Easter and then Friday. So with our program, it doesn't forgive. We have to make it up, and we do have the monies. And we do have the monies.
But they're all grant-funded, correct?
Yes, it's through the ISD grant.
On item 32, it says anonymous donor, that was? Very nice to see that.
Yes.
And then it says it's a, students of 15 to 30 per teacher? Did I read that right?
Yes, that one is a very interesting grant. I was called in by Dr. Montiel from STC. That anonymous donor, of course, they didn't reveal to us who it was, paid the Science Mill, it is, it is located in Johnson City, and it's really very expensive. It's a grant to promote STEM, and it's very interesting. We're gonna be selecting some teachers. It's for one week, and it's gonna be an elementary camp for elementary students. And then the other week, it's for middle school students. And the, the teachers that are selected, they're gonna be paid to get trained, $800 for a whole week. And of course, it has to be after school, and then it's gonna get $1,000 per week for teaching the, the STEM immersion camp. So it's very interesting. I was approached by the president, Dr. Montiel, and we did Zoom with the, with the company owner, and he said, I can't tell you who donated it, but it's anonymous donors. I think that's very nice. It's very unusual to see that. And of course, it's probably because we're very, we're very rural.
What was, what was the total donation?
It's gonna be worth about $80,000, because they are gonna donate some computers and devices as well, and of course, the training to those particular teachers that, that are selected. So it's gonna be two weeks, but, and then a whole week of trainings, and they're gonna get paid $800, and then $1,000, and then $1,000. That's pretty good.
I don't know who that is, but it was, I thought it was important enough to say, to say that out loud.
Yeah, but it's, it's admirable for somebody to donate all that money and not wanting to get recognized, so. Wherever it is, great job.
We kinda wanna do like we do the donations, say, send the letter, but.
Yeah, we don't know who they are.
It's a garden angel. Anything else on 33 or 34, since I'm here?
No. On item 29, Virginia, what's that? The summer, there was a committee, right, that determined what programs that were gonna be over the summer? I just, I think I read that right. There was a committee that determined what programs were.
Yes, sir, we met with principals, directors, teachers, and we came up with a plan. We're gonna be running regular summer school for kinder, pre-kindre, kindre, third, fourth, fifth, middle school, and of course, high school. And then we're gonna be running one special ed unit, and then summer bridge, credit recovery, academic youth, Texas School Initiative, dual credit enrollment, migrant, bilingual supplemental strategists, profession, not professional development, child, of course, the ACE program as well. So we are not running a full program as we have in the past, but.
Correct.
It's, it's a decent one.
And with the input from everyone.
Everybody, yes.
Committee. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any further discussion required? There was a motion by Mr. Varela, second by Mr. Velazquez. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 34, consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding MOU between Region 1 ESC Adult Education Program and Rural Gas City 3 ISD After School Center on Education Grant for the 2023, 2024 school year. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item 34?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 34 and 35 presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 34 and 35. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion? I would say that item 34 has, it's the classes in, industry-based certifications, parents and schools have no cost to the district. Is that correct? That's correct. What are they offering, I think, ESL, GED, and flabotomy classes, or are there any additional?
I just wanted to say that, yes, it's, I was approached by Region 1, and they used to rent a facility from us in the past, but now they're at the Workforce Commission for free. So I guess they felt bad or something, and they have a grant through the Workforce Commission. So they're teaching the classes for the adults in All-Star County. And right now, we're prescreening them, and we have 24 that are gonna go into flabotomy. Those that perhaps don't meet the requirements because they don't have a JV or high school diploma or American citizens, they're gonna be shifted into the ESL or JV program, all for free, okay?
I just think it's a great opportunity.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Any further discussion? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 36, discussion, consideration, and possible action to amend Board General Counsel's contract. I'll take this opportunity to say that Mrs. Salazar has done a heck of a job with the, with the district. Before, there was a lot of work that was outsourced. There was a lot of work that couldn't be done by previous general counsel, and so it would have to be outsourced, and we spent extra money on attorney's fees quite a bit, actually. And since, since he come in, he's curtailed that, he's got a plan. He's always prepared, he's ready, and I know that Mr. Peña and Mr. Dr. Salinas, I think, talk to him on the daily, so. For me, there's no need to question whether he deserves, at least the opportunity for an extension of his, amendment of his contract to keep helping out the district in the manner that he has. So my motion is to give the superintendent the authority to negotiate amended contract with a Board General Counsel contract, and I'll also leave it up, leave it open for discussion if anybody else wants to, to add to that. So there's a motion by myself, any time, is there a second to that motion?
Mr. President, I, I'll second that motion, and the only statement I'll say is that, you know, once upon a time, we didn't bring him in, but I find him to be one of the best school attorneys, and I've been in it for 20-some years. I find him to be one of the best school attorneys I've, I've seen in 20-some years, so thank you for everything you do.
Thank you so much. Any further discussion?
I wanna echo what you all said. I think Salazar, you've done a great job with, for the district, and you've taken care of the district. And I know that you've saved us a lot of money in attorney's fees, so, you know, we really appreciate what you've done for the district, and I can't thank you enough.
You know, and I gotta add, there's three attorneys up here, and we're more, we're, we're more critiqueful of other attorneys, you know? They would judge each other probably all the time. So for us to say what we're saying is a huge compliment to you, sir. And thank you, keep up the good work, to be honest with you. Mr. Peña, I know you wanted to say a few words.
Yes, sir, you know, just to reiterate everything you all are saying, Dr. Salinas, myself, and other personnel, you know, when we have to have legal discussions, he's always available, always answer our calls. Actually, as a school district, we're saving money before, you know, years ago, they used to have to go out and look for a special ed type of an attorney and other areas that they specialize in, and we don't have to do that anymore. You know, just this past week, you know, he was with us a whole day on one of the mediations, so, you know, kudos to Mr. Salazar, and he does an excellent job for the school district.
And he's a little sick today, so.
He don't have COVID, right?
He's a little sick today.
I haven't been tested, but I, I do, I, when I came into this position, I did tell the board and the superintendent at that time, and the general public, that I will always take care of tax dollars. I will not look the other way. If it doesn't look good, or doesn't, if it smells bad, I'm gonna bring it up. And I ask a lot of questions, but again, I always think that we, the board here, the superintendent, and myself, we are, we are entrusted with public funds, and we need to take care of them. So again, my promise is the same, that I will always take care of the public funds, and sometimes people don't like that, but that's the way I am. And again, I'm here for, for the public, and I do appreciate your trust and your support in my legal ability. So thank you very much to the board, to the whole school district and the community. We do what I'm doing.
If there's no further discussion, there's a motion by myself, second by Mr. Varela. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand.
And for the record, although we express the same, I express the same sentiment, I, I will abstain for the record.
I will abstain as well.
All right, Mr. Pope and Mr. Peña are both abstaining. The motion passes with a vote of five to zero. The board will now convene in closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, section 551.071 through 551.076, and 551.082 to 551.084. The time is now 7:30 PM. All right, we're now reconvening back in open session, Section 10. On item A, there is no action required. On item B, there is also no action required. Item C, do you have a motion on item C?
I, I move that we approve item C as discussed in a executive session.